Announcements and other business. The next meeting is January 21, 2016. Are there any other announcements anyone would like to bring out?
On Monday, we will be doing a presentation on our MOU with the university. You can watch on TV. Come, you'll be here.
MOU on what?
The blanket MOU, the memory and of understanding in the different endeavors that we've done since 2012, working with the university.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. Well, with our business concluded, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you very much. Disposition of minutes. In review, is there any changes, additions that anyone would like to make to this?
I did a simple punctuation change. Other than that, I would move through the minutes.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's all unanimous. There are... Oh, I'm sorry.
By default, abstain.
Oh, okay. One abstention. Thank you. Let's see. There are no cases today. Communications, 12 West Union Street, a Title 41 modification. Mr. Paskey?
Yes, this is the 12 West Union. They're requesting a modification. And according to our code, I'll just read it to you very quickly. It states that to qualify as a minor modification, the service safety director shall find that the proposed modification consists of activity that is no more intensive than any of the following. Adjustments to the size and location of structures, off-street loading areas, ponds, pools, decking, dumpster locations, patios, and required screening, fencing, lighting, landscaping, accessory structures, and other improvements that do not, would be exempt when I'm going through this, but that do not, and then I go to number or letter B here, increased building mass of a principal structure through an increase in height, length, or percent of lot coverage. So what is happening here is that they've done some studies and found out that the water table in that area is higher than they anticipated, and that project did have a basement in it. So what their request can do, basically, is take that basement and insert it now into the second floor and take the third, second, the original second, third floors and bump them up a story, so that it's now a four-story tall building, which does meet bulk controls within that district. But by code, they've got to go through the Title 41 process again. We didn't get the timeframe, so they're here for an open communication today to review it. And since everything is really the same, footprint-wise and such, that they can do the open communication today, we'll advertise it and come back for the formal approval in two weeks. But they can introduce the changes today that they're wishing to propose, so.
So in the Office of Code Interpretation, it indicates because this is a change in mass, height, that that indeed does go through this review process?
Absolutely.
Okay.
But I understand they're under some serious time constraints, so the review doesn't change any. I mean, from the one that was issued before, other than the height. And I think we can probably get them on the agenda in two weeks instead of our normal 30 days plus. But by code, we do have to advertise it, so if it goes well today, then I will get the signage out there tomorrow morning, and it will be posted for two weeks then, before the next meeting.
Now, a lot of changes have been made in accommodations for historic preservation, but this will be the tallest structure.
If you look at the elevations, and I'll let the architect address that, it didn't change much of the front elevation, so, and they can, they can speak to that.
And just please state your name and the company you're representing, please.
My name is David Moran, and I work for RBC Architects. Yeah, I couldn't explain it any better than John did about we had GTO tech in, as soon as we could get the site cleared from demolition, and we hit water at nine to 11 feet throughout the site. So there's a, there's a sand gravel base underneath there. There's rock down at 20 feet. But our intention was to go down probably 12 feet and build foundations and then a basement, 11-foot-deep basement down there. That's not feasible now. The cost to actually put a leach field in, pump the waters up to the storm system, the risk of undermining, surrounding other foundations, the trupultes and other ones, eventually the union also. And trying to preserve those front elevations would have taken an elaborate foundation under that, that we'd have the peronisus buttress system underneath the existing foundations backed to the road. It was, we went out to bid in that condition, and the prices were way too expensive to try to accommodate that, so. The owner asked, what else could he do? And we suggested we start at grade. We reviewed that with the soil inspector, engineer, and he's recommending that we remove the, like, down three and a half feet over the whole site and recompact it with six-inch lifts to get good compaction on the soil. So that's what our intent is to do, and then build our new foundations on that. And so, basically, the footprint doesn't change at all, but we raised the building up, and really, the fourth floor is almost sort of a loft. It's sort of that townhouse style where the, you enter all the buildings, all the apartments on the third floor, and then within each dwelling, there is a internal stair that goes up to the, to the fourth floor, to the bedrooms, mainly it's bedrooms. We are now going to have an elevator. The elevator was always going to service the commercial space, but now the elevator is now going to go up to the third floor so that we can address the handicap accessibility issue. And so we have bedrooms on the third floor also, so we can at least provide four bedrooms on the, on that third floor level that can be accessed by the elevator access. So that addresses that kind of concern that, you know, upstairs and things like that, so. We tried to be sensitive to, you can see on the elevation there, that the elevation didn't change that much. We kept that sort of Queen Anne look more confined to sort of the bay window look over the building and some of the ornate details there, and then a more simpler, flat facade behind that up to the last 40.
So how many more feet will it go up now?
It actually, if you can see the original one, we sort of exaggerated the three stories before, and it only, it's only going up, we've tightened up some of the other floors to stay under the 50-foot requirement, and I think we're at 48 feet six right now, to the top of the roof. So we've taken away some of those gable, that gable look from before, which was on the side elevation, and other than the front bay look, it's going to be a flat roof to the back of the building. A membrane, a rubber membrane roof.
Hi, and John, you may have to enlighten me, but I thought I heard a change in this was due to the proposed commercial space coming in and expanding their use.
Well, they wanted more than one floor of space, and so the idea that 12 initially had a basement or a partial basement that we, that turned out to be a wet, moldy space, we thought, well, we're just going to dig it out, we're going to, we're going to drain it better and accommodate their needs of additional, that 3,000 square feet more space that they could have in the basement. And that's, they wanted over, they wanted total of two floors of space. So that's where, initially, they were just going to have one floor and somehow with, I wasn't involved in that level with John Valentor and Gary Hunter and the client he was, or the potential user was going to need, but that's what the program created at that point.
Since we've seen the original south elevation and the entire proposal that came to us and also to the boards of the community.
No, they were certainly in it from that original elevation. Original Title 41 had a basement in it.
With the idea for occupancy of this commercial space?
Yes. We had an elevator that went down to the basement that time instead of going up to the second floor.
Just one of my initial concerns might be just that the original designs even are blocking out a lot of light in the rest of the neighborhood. So with this increase, obviously, that's going to be even more?
Well, I don't know how much affects the surrounding buildings, but you can see that we have these setbacks within the second and third floor to allow for windows, that every bedroom has its window as required. And now on the office space, which they didn't like the basement without natural light.
I'm talking about the lighting, like, across the street, like, on the follet side and whatnot. That really, it takes...
That does not affect, they're on the north side of that, so they're not shading any of, across the street. What it actually would be shading is the alleyway or trupultes, side elevation, or the side of Union, which they've always enclosed before. And Scott Building is a little shallower, I mean, it's two stories. 10 West Union is shorter, two stories, and they always have an alley, so they've been able to get the sunlight as it moves around the front facade, moving towards Bromley that way.
But when you're on the sidewalk level, obviously, that's really taking out a little bit more of the skyline that you did see at one point.
It takes the skyline out, but since the sun is behind you, moving across the college green and that, it doesn't shade the street anymore, or the sidewalk anymore.
I just thought I'd let you know, the B2D does require four stories and 50 feet in height. So it is a permissible use to do this within the, the height and the, and the stories, yeah.
I mean, I'm not a historical preservationist or an architect, but this just looks like a great big block. I don't know what anybody else's looks like.
Which part? Well, I mean, we're, we just, you know, this is our first stab at the design of that. We could certainly try to ornate it so it's not a big blob. I mean, that would certainly, that's always my choice.
I used to say block. I meant to say block, not blob.
Block, okay. Well, we could certainly, I'm always for making it more ornate-looking and more historically correct. It's financially that always seems to simplify it. Some might say it looks too heavy, and we could do it out of ethos.
It's a new build. It's, we're not preserving anything here. It's a new build, so, but it is in the district, and so it does need to be reviewed by the Preservation Commission. They have a meeting on Monday, so I'll be forwarding the information to them. There are dozens of buildings in the Uptown District, though, that are blocks like this. So it actually, in my opinion, just reviewing it, it conforms with what we see common in the Uptown District.
But while it conforms, could they do something to improve?
As long as...
To enhance?
Sure, I suppose so.
Yes, we could.
Yeah, who's going to be on the least common denominator?
We've left that part over 14. That's, the block section you're saying is over 14. We've left that vague at this point, trying to, it's going to be hard to find that exact brick, you know, because that is that brown, that light beige-brown brick. So we have to research, and is that brick available anymore? The 12 was always the red brick, which isn't a problem. That's our intent there. But over 14, which is why we sort of left it kind of undescriptive, is what kind of material can we do? Can we put an ethos up that we can paint it to look the brick color, like we've done at other projects uptown? Or can we find that brick to match it? Or is matching it an issue? Or a nice, a continuous cornice over the top that ties the whole thing together? You know, you've got this strange phenomenon of a property line in the middle of the building, and so that's, that's the challenge.
So now are you talking about 14 West Union?
Yeah, because 14, what you're seeing in front of you is actually 12 and 14.
Half of 14. Yeah, just so everyone's aware, that what we're doing is that 10, 12, 14, and 16 were the four buildings that burnt. 10 is being replaced as 10. 16 is being replaced as 16. But 12 and 14 are now going to be, the entire thing is, what did I say? It was going to be 12.
12, yes.
The entire building is going to be 12.
14 is gone.
There will not be a 14 anymore. Because the other half of 14 is going to be part of 16. So it was, yeah, shared ownership of the same building, right down the middle of the building is what we had in the situation. And the 14 was actually split right down the middle. So we're trying to clear up the property lines and define the difference between the two buildings.
There were insufficient egress for, I mean, we're so lucky there's, no students got hurt in that fire, because they shared just one open stairwell out of the front of the building between the sundry. And now we have, you know, today's standard, three-hour rated firewalls that separate these spaces, and we have stairwells that are rated with rated doors, and so now, they both will share funneling into these, both to come out onto Union Street or to the back alley. And so we have a much better egress system in the building. Plus, the buildings are going to be fully sprinkled, that they're a lot safer than they ever were before.
This is a concern, but certainly a comment, you know, that this is really going to, this one four-story 12 West Union is going to create a whole different look to the whole run of West Union between Court and Congress. One that jumps up four stories, and again with this, this flat panel facade as opposed to any creative way of making it kind of tie. But, because as I understand it, 16 is going to stay 16, there's no...
Well, 16, it will stay two stories, but then, according with the Historical Society, we're going to, it's going to be three stories when it's far enough past the viewing of it. And then there's actually a few townhouses in it, which go up a fourth story also. So there, back there, closer to the alley in that corner there, there are additional bedrooms above those apartments back there.
But it'll have the stepping effect where you're walking along, and you have the appearance that it's two stories when you get to that, except for this particular building?
We've always tried, if he didn't go for the historical preservation, we would have, we recommended to him to have a three-story building there, in lining with the other storefronts. And he, you know, he really wanted this historical preservation grants funds, and so he's trying to accommodate all the different things at once.
We shifting that with the other building?
Yeah, sorry. I'm trying to say that the scale is evolving in the look on that street as we continue to develop that hole that's there right now.
Any other questions, comments? And we should look forward to this in two weeks at the next meeting. Mr. Paskey?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see. Also in Communications, the 2016 organizational structure. Mr. Mayor, do you want to take the front here?
Sure. You know, at this point in time, the structure is going to remain the same. I'd like for it to remain the same moving forward in 2016. Chugging along.
Okay. Terrific. Question?
I would ask you to consider maybe going back a bit, and we spend an awful lot of time on Title 41, and it's just reactive rather than proactive. And if we ever hope to get anything done, I think we're going to have to either extend our meetings or go to a small group reviewing and then reporting back, or some other device. I don't think many members of the commission want to go for longer meetings, and so I would hope that you might consider that, because when Title 41 was put through, and I sat with Debbie Phillips and we, we went round and round about it with the business owners, and I'm not sure it's doing what it was supposed to do anyway.
Okay.
Going back to, that was an idea from Pogomeyer, and I don't think it works very well. That's just my opinion, and we spend a lot of time on it. And time that probably could be spent doing something more positive for the future. I don't know. And you guys haven't ever known anything else. Just like she doesn't know there used to be a, Paula doesn't know there used to be an elevator right where you're putting one in. It was taken out about, yes, it was.
Did not know that.
Yeah, but, you know, I'm the old-time person, but the other, yeah, what?
I said, okay.
Okay. But I just wonder if, you know, we, we did a lot of work, we really brainstormed, and then, you know, we got smacked with cell phone towers. And I frankly, you know, I don't know that I have the technical expertise to deal with that, but, you know, it's always little details and people not coming in. I just wish we could move in the direction of doing something proactive rather than reactive. So they used to have a technical review committee. When Harry Kanashige was on, I replaced him, and I think that fell by the board. And, you know, where those questions could be asked. That's why I kind of asked for this thing that we could, or else we'll never, we'll never get the corridors done. Maybe we don't have to. Maybe all the decisions have been made, the property's been purchased. And so, anyway, that was my suggestion. I wish you'd take it under consideration.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Hardly has spoken in the past about feeling essentially like a permitting authority.
Yes.
It is what...
That's exactly what I was saying.
You know, because basically, it comes, you know, it meets all the requirements. We're told that. They go get their variances and come back, so.
I think as long as, I think one of the stronger abilities of the Planning Commission is the, to be a window for the community to see. And I think also going with that, if you can incorporate still where the public still has a lot of transparency into the process in terms of, you know, what's going on, as opposed to maybe automatically approving things away from, you know, the cameras and things of that nature.
Well, they wouldn't be approved. I think you just review.
Right.
So you have more time to do stuff that's, because, you know, like, last time, we had that meeting that involved the motorcycle shop, and, you know, the question is, and nobody would have picked up on it, was, should it be right up to the, to the property lot line when there's a good chance that we're going to, and even somebody said in the same meeting, we need to widen that road and put a median strip down the center, but, you know, it might be precluded by this. And, you know, instead of doing the least common denominator, could you come back, could we come back and say, let's do something more progressive in, in terms of the kind of city we want in the future? You know, and so if you're, as long as you're dealing with it, I mean, dealing in a, with the quotation marks, maybe you could do that instead of, and sometimes there's stuff that just two people, the engineer and co-director, might not get.
Yeah.
And so, you know, so I don't, I don't want it behind the scenes, but I just want to spiff it up a bit, or something. Okay. I tried.
Thank you.
Any other comments as far as the organizational structure? Okay. We have goals and, discussion of goals under that, the Comprehensive Master Plan, the OU Master Plan, West Union Street, and the Uptown Business Improvement District. Nancy, you know, did you want to take the lead as far as maybe some things that she would like to see in terms of, say, the Comprehensive Master Plan update?
Well, I've heard several people say that we need to have a lot of meetings, and I wish that if they're going to have meetings, they'd go over the, Paul, maybe I'm talking to you, go over the objectives that were in the original plan and see if those need to be done first. I mean, it's, this is just my observation, but when you have a public meeting, all the people with agendas come out, and the ordinary citizens don't usually. And so we'd hear a lot about the swimming pool, or, pardon me, or something like Airbnb or something like that, when in fact, we really need to talk about what is going on that is different from 20 years ago. We've got five years till, or four years till 2020 happens. Are we going to make it? Oh, I don't think so. It's a little bit different city. Well, what do we have to tweak? And it seems to me you have to start with those objectives. That's the traditional way, I think they taught you in planning school, didn't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so, and then maybe the sub-points under it might be tweaked more. And maybe it could be, you know, maybe citizen meetings. We had, when Pogomeyer came down, we had meetings with citizens, and it wasn't just, I mean, those people with agendas would show up. It wasn't one person standing in the front, everyone else talking. It was round tables and everybody getting together with assigned discussion leaders. And I think that worked fairly well. Now, you know, the plan isn't perfect, but then neither is Athens, so...
Everybody has a agenda. Everybody who shows up at a meeting has an agenda.
Well, I mean, sometimes their agenda is just good citizenship.
Right.
And, you know, at first I worked with Ed, and then I worked with Dale, and we had, you know, beautiful turnouts, 200 people, and they weren't all complaining about stuff.
Right.
They were talking about the Athens of the future. And I think, you know, that, that, those events as enacted through the time made this a better place to live. And I, and so I think that, you know, if you just talk about the Uptown, and I do think we need to have a serious look, and I think that's somebody else's thing under here, but, and then after that, I don't know how much of that plan needs to be changed, but Title 41 was in there, and I'm just thinking, oh my goodness, I'm talking about how bad. It isn't bad, but it's just, it isn't, it needs to be updated also.
Right.
Well, yeah, I think going forward is the Comprehensive Master Plan also though someplace that needs to address the shared economy issues such as Uber, Airbnb, going forward, suggestions of that nature. Also, would we, as far as the Comprehensive Plan before all this began, is the Planning Commission the place to maybe make some recommendations to the Comprehensive Plan Committee as far as things that we've noticed over the last few years, where we maybe just put together just some suggestions or recommendations or whatever, you know, we can do from our end?
Is there a Comprehensive Plan Committee?
No.
Not yet.
There was one, but they've been inactive for about three or four years. Their responsibility was actually on creating, by ordinance, what they were tasked with doing was extremely difficult for a volunteer citizen committee to do, which was to establish benchmarks and metrics to track implementation of the actual book, the plan. It wasn't to steer policy or to make changes to the, the actual plan. So what we probably, what we need to discuss, I think, if we're talking about having a new plan or updating our plan, is how do we, what kind of a body do we want to have to, to help steer that, even to kick it off to, just to have these basic conversations? Is it something we want to do as a Planning Commission every two weeks? Or is it, do we want to have some sort of an ad hoc or a special blue-ribbon task force or some, I'm not sure how we want to approach it, but some sort of a standing committee seems, would be useful. In turn, would be extremely useful for me to really help do a lot of that research for you, Nancy, that we're talking about. We really want to look at what we did in the plan, you know, what accomplishments have we made. There has been a lot that actually has been done in that plan.
Historic districts, all kinds of...
Historic districts, Title 41. I mean, some of these things, they don't, they didn't work out as well as we'd hoped. A lot of the corridors and intersections, there's a lot in there that we, we have accomplished. We just, we don't realize that we're working on it. There's several issues that we didn't even touch on. Sustainability is a big issue that we didn't approach. Oil and gas was not an issue or a concern when the plan was written. We weren't expecting a major fire.
Yeah, there were major fires every, the whole 30 years have been involved in the city, 35.
Ohio University has a new master plan, so we need to kind of look at how they, how a city plan should, they need, how they communicate with each other and make sure that they're ideally not at odds with each other, I guess.
Well, if it's been passed by the trustees, it's there, right?
Right.
Hasn't yet, but it's coming forward, so that's why...
But if it were, but if, they operate on a separate land use agenda. They have separate control. I mean, we had big fights about that.
Right.
So, you know, I don't think we have any business, I mean, you were a participant in it, but I don't see how we could have much to do with it. Or, you know, if they are saying we should do something, then we should tell them to stop growth, stop the cancerous growth. I mean, it's, I want to find a way to cut down traffic in this town. I mean, we've got the, well, I'm going to get off my soap.
I just was thinking, and I included the Comprehensive Plan, I thought it, oh, yeah, OU Master Plan, simply at least acknowledging that this exists as we go forward in our updates.
Yeah, wait around, there'll be another one, because there were several, I mean, in this, in this period since we've made our plan, there've been at least three. You know, I used to have the maps in my map drawer, and we'd pull them out and look and see what changed. I mean, an earlier plan, not so long ago, John Kotowski's name on it, went, had the main traffic flow go down Stewart Street and Schaefer Street. It was a pretty decent plan, but it's certainly gone. You know, so they come and they go, because, I mean, they don't have a legislative authority that is going to be the mainstay of it.
Right.
There's one other thing I think that was important, and it had to do with, again, with the convening of the committee and all. But I think that it created a little bit of, maybe not discomfort, but the people that were on it, I think all council members should feel free to come, and all administrative people should be free to come, but there should be one or two spokesmen. I mean, that's, I think that worked out reasonably well last time. You know, where there were a couple, council convened it, and they stuck with it, but they, and it wouldn't have to be council, it could be, now we have a planner, that was one of our things we wanted. So, you know, the planner convenes it, but, you know, then also, members of Planning Commission should feel free to come to smaller meetings. And maybe they could take leadership in those... And maybe they could take leadership in those so-called small meetings instead of just one person standing in front and taking the views from whoever's dishing it out about the pool or whatever.
Paul, from your experience, is there some way that the city can interact with the OU master plan a little bit more in the future?
I was thinking more about, especially about the edges, but we're so early in this conversation, I don't know, but it seems like it, it doesn't make any sense to have a plan for a portion of the city that's about four square miles of 10 square miles that doesn't act, and then have a plan for the remainder of the city and those plans not jive very well, especially at those edges, you know? If we're saying one thing for a corridor and they're saying another thing, or if we're not looking at saying, what is the university going to be doing on this location and how will that impact traffic circulation, road demands, anything like that? It seems like they just need to work together, just like any other planning document. You want them to work rather than not be at odds with each other.
And here's another one, infrastructure.
And infrastructure.
That's the most important one where, where decisions that are made are going to have a serious impact on water and sewer, and storm sewer, sorry.
And recreation as well, of course.
Yeah, there's going to be a lot of touch points with the OU master plan and I think timing wise is perfect in moving this forward and re-engaging, and I, you know, Nancy, I agree with you in that we don't really need to reinvent the wheel. The master plan, our comprehensive plan is there. The heavy lifting has already been done on that. It's going back, as Paul, you were just mentioning a minute ago, which I'm a firm believer in, is identifying what have we done, what have we done well? But I think more importantly, what was put forward in the original comprehensive plan that hasn't either, either been addressed or may not fully have been addressed, what are the issues surrounding those?
Right.
That becomes the groundwork. And then we kind of push out beyond that with where do we want to see ourselves in 25 years as opposed to where we're, you're.
2020.
We're 14 into actually four more years of the current master plan, comprehensive plan. But I've attended a lot of those meetings with OU's master plan as well and there are a lot of touch points that I think for the city's comprehensive plan, not necessarily to address them, but to know where are we going? What, with our historic streets, what do we see, are streets becoming or not becoming? How are we going to roll out in the future? So I'm completely in favor of re-engaging its, as I understand, its council action to appoint members to the comprehensive plan committee moving forward. But I very mentioned to council how much I want this to move forward.
Or you could just sign a call to do it.
I could.
If you feel like a dictator or something. I don't know, I just want.
No need, no need.
Well, you know, it's important to understand that the planning commission, when we were doing the comprehensive plan, didn't want to do it and they didn't like view sheds and there were, there was all kinds of anchor and after about a year, we finally just passed it. I mean, so I hope this, and I don't think this planning commission would be like that, but that one was pretty entrenched and they had their own opinions.
Right.
Again, most of you weren't here.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, the planning commission and council adopted separate versions.
I don't know, but the council version was the one that was final.
Right.
Debate is good though, so.
Well, if it was debate, it was more hurling brick bats.
Paula or Mr. Mayor, do you want to take the lead on the idea of the West Union Street and the Uptown Business Improvement since I?
Did you put them on there?
Don't know which of you has the.
We did. The mayor's been speaking, we've been discussing an opportunity on West Union Street because it's been closed, it's been down to one lane for a period of time and possibility of kind of enhancing in that area and doing a mini corridor improvement. Generic enough?
That's generic enough.
Not around about.
Yeah, you're right. And it's interesting, it's almost fortuitous that we were just talking about West, 12 West, but along between court and Congress with having lived for a year and two months with, with one lane of tract of traffic going through there. As you all know, it is a one-way, it was two lanes one-way, so the direction won't change, but the opportunity's there to plan a little bit, to kind of think a little bit through possibly making a plaza throughout that region, a pedestrian bicycle plaza or pedestrian, it could be a gathering space. I think there's, it's interesting. It's an interesting thing to think through that could change a street scape and start making us think about other possible street scapes in the city. City planner and I have spoken a little bit about this.
Could I ask, you're talking about the one traffic lane that's closed now, making it into the plaza?
And similar to the way it's constricted now, it brings back up into two lanes at the lights so there's some space.
Mm-hmm.
Now, we often talk about where's our greenery, you're a big one on that.
No, I, you know, I just remember that one of the problems that Pogomeyer got into was talking about a pedestrian mall of town all the way down the street. It was awful. We kept telling him, don't bring it up, don't bring it up, Dale, and I went up and talked to him, but they, but I think the one lane is a good idea. Could be a usable one. As long as you're talking about, how about now there are what, 3,500 beds uptown and very little parking? And I wish, you know, I wish somebody would, would have a, what?
I was looking at John's face when you.
I don't think there's that many beds uptown.
Well, there were 2,500 last time.
Per who?
Rick Abel, the mayor.
I'll have to look into that.
Well, you know, just take, I imagine he was counting the sororities and fraternities, but.
I mean, if we're strictly Court Street only, I don't, I don't.
No, no, not strictly Court Street.
How far are we expanding the range?
I mean, I, well, you can expand it, but the heavy concentration, the big changes have been in the Uptown. And the Uptown isn't the same as it was. I remember I had an engineering student that did a study and he said the traffic, I mean, the parking was extremely efficient. It was more efficient than he ever would believe and I think that remains to this day. On West Washington Street was the primary location. But you know, I just, it's, the Uptown is complex. It's much more complex than our zoning suggests, I think. We have like the day uses and the nighttime uses for entertainment and then we have the residential, which is substantially more. I think that there's more than there were. Lamb horns is gone, their storage is gone. You start going up and down the streets.
I'll let you know.
Yeah.
I mean, but I.
Or occupancy. Just do occupancy, he must have done that. He wasn't necessarily advocating for anything, so I don't think there was any hidden agenda.
So along the same lines with the possibility of looking at West Union Street, we wouldn't do this in a vacuum, of course, you know, the businesses would all be invited to the table, was a general Uptown Business Improvement District. It's been a long time since the street scape and you've got the history of that.
I mean, you know, I mean, street scape, that's a brand name, we don't want to do that.
But the improvements.
Improvements, I think that's a much better use. If you'd said street scape, I would have hassled you.
From trash cans to recycling to, you know, parking meters and getting to maybe kiosk kind of events, getting obstructions out of our narrow restricted areas, so.
You mean like the newspaper boxes?
There you go, keep adding.
Well, I mean, if you're also talking though about trying to reduce traffic flow uptown, then I think you're also talking about how do you get, well, say Athens Transit and they expand hours. You know, if that was necessary in terms of the night crowd, what have yous accustomed to parking their car, going to the bar, restaurant, you know, if you're talking about reducing that in the future, then are you also talking about expanding transportation such as the Athens Transit or the cab services or things of that nature?
I, I don't believe, I didn't mean to state that we're going to reduce, it was more improve.
Well.
Like she said, you don't want to say turn uptown into pedestrian plaza because the businesses, deliveries, you know, the explosion, but surely we can improve.
Definitely.
In terms of the goals, how would the planning commission like to, these are all issues that at least some members have interest in, in particular issues, but how would we like to organize the discussion and this? Is there something that you had in mind as far as just parceling out?
Well, so, you know, Nancy mentioned earlier, she didn't think people would be open to longer meetings.
Right.
But, you know, I don't know, in terms of our discussions about this, I don't know how you can accommodate that without us meeting either for a longer period of time while we're here already or scheduling kind of special meetings to discuss these things. And so, you know, I wonder if like, you know, at different points, we just plan on, we're going to be here longer for this meeting to discuss this particular topic. Or, you know, again, you can plan a separate meeting, but it might, if we're all gathered at one time, it might be easier just to extend the meeting and then kind of maybe one at a time focus on these things.
And maybe Paul, because he has the experience with, could actually focus, you know, help us to focus on which ones seem to need the most. Not that we would ignore the others, but there are some that are more critical, I think, today than they were. Some that are probably pretty, but I don't want to put work on your desk.
Just some guidance as to what you guys want to focus on is, would be helpful.
Goals and objectives?
Which goals or which objectives, sure.
And the plan.
Right.
These, as I look at these four, of course, I mean, these can, I think certainly be somewhat bundled together. I mean, there's the OU master plan and there's the comprehensive master plan for the city and then the West Union and Uptown Business Improvement District, those actually go hand in hand as well to move forward with that. So maybe subgroups for anyone wanting to work on those and as opposed to planning commission as a whole working through all of it.
I mean, I think with the OU master plan, I don't know what we need to really cover in this meeting other than, I guess my first, my question really is, is everybody, are all the planning commissioners aware, have seen the master plan in a draft stage or seen presentations on it at this point?
I've seen some.
Or is that something that we would, you would like to invite somebody from the university to come and give a brief presentation?
That will be helpful to me.
At planning commission meeting about, and maybe we can just leave it at that at that point. Would that be helpful?
I think, I think the mayor is correct that, you know, if, for instance, we just took on recommendations that we want to make as far as the comprehensive master plan, that some of these other issues are already incorporated in that anyway.
Right.
I do know that we've asked and the university are going to attempt to schedule a presentation to city council on their master plan, so.
So we could have told that.
That would be an evening meeting, it'll be a committee here in the next six weeks or so.
Okay.
And as the comprehensive master plan moves forward, we'll probably have to do this in conjunction with planning development out of city council, particularly, and I didn't want to get to this level yet in this meeting in terms of administrative, but are we going to be hiring a consultant to assist? How much can one lone city planner?
I'll be able to project, we want to take on.
Well, I think that's what we have.
And so that means first strings and things like that.
Does anyone want to discuss the goals any further at this meeting or we're ready to move on?
Sure.
Okay. Reports from the city planner, Mr. Loeb?
I don't have too much this evening. The, the university project that will be reviewed, like I said, at the store preservation commission meeting on Monday. The sustainability commission is still working on the plan. We had Erin Sykes from Rural Action, she's the director of the zero waste project there. She presented to them on Tuesday evening to talk about what they're working on. We had Bruce Underwood from the recycling center present in December. The waste issues were kind of the last thing that we really needed to focus on to get a draft completed, so getting their information over the last two months has really helped. So we've got a meeting, a work session in a couple of weeks to try to hammer out our draft and then start working on layout, things like that. So we're getting really close there. I also have a graduate student in the environmental studies program who I'm working with, and she's working with our sustainability commission as well, trying to find the documentation. What she wants to do is present, is coordinate a, is do a review of our city zoning code with respect to, on a few different issues, but look at how the zoning code works with sustainability measures. If you recall, there was a study that was done by some researchers back in 2014 that looked at about 30 or 40 different community zoning codes, including Athens, and Athens was rated very low on a sustainability spec, on a sustainability window as far as how our zoning code does. So we wanted to take a deeper dive into that issue to see if there is some things that we can do. So she's going to make some recommendations. Her priority is with off-campus student housing and how the sustainability and the efficiency of those type of units. And so she will also be meeting with local landlords to understand better how it works on their end and with students and tenants to work it out. So that'll be a project that if all goes as planned, she will have completed for graduation at the end of this semester, starting on Monday. Her name's Marshall Cooper, she's very sharp. I've been making, meeting with her for the last six months off and on about it, but she's about to start the project right now. And I do have a few handouts for the planning commissioners, the most recent edition of the APA's Small Town and Rural Planning Newsletter. We just joined that section of the American Planning Association a few months ago. So there's some good information on here, including Vision to Reality, 10 Action Steps to Implement a Comprehensive Plan is the first topic. And then I have just the zoning practice document relating to zoning code language. I'll hand those out as we move. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Paskey?
We do not have any Title 41 cases coming forward other than the revision to 12 West Union that, next meeting. And there's no BZA meeting this month either. There were no applications during the month of December. I can tell you in February, we do have a conditional use for bed and breakfast on Richland Avenue, another application for, another one coming in. And I don't know of any other Title 41s for February at this time, so that's good. Had time to discuss these other things.
Exactly, it's an opportunity.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Loeb or Mr. Paskey? Okay, thank you very much. Opportunity for citizens to speak. Is there anyone in the audience here? Okay, thank you very much. January 7, 2016, meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. A quorum has been established, all members are present. Are there any people out in the audience who would like to address the planning commission at some time during the meeting? You'll just need to raise your right hand and do you solemnly swear to tell the truth as you know it to the city planning commission? Thank you very much.